We would ask for those of us that are in attendance to make sure that our cellphones are silent so they would not disrupt this meeting. We would appreciate it. Commissioners, you have before you agenda packets. I do have one item that I'd like to add to today's agenda and then we will see if there are any other items you desire to add or pull. But I'd like to ask that we would add under five, the sheriff, five B, the consideration of a school resource officer at West Craven High School, presentation by Sheriff Chip Hughes. Are there any other items that you desire to add to today's agenda or pull? Here none. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion. We approve the agenda with the addition that you just mentioned.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with necessary addition. Are there any discuss- is there any discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you. Item one, the consent agenda. You have there the minutes of the September 5th, 2023, meeting, the tax releases and refunds, and then information, technology, budget amendment. Are there any items that you desire to pull from the consent agenda today? Here none. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. Is any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Departmental matters. The first item we have is solid waste, the emergency management consulting services. Ms. Stephen Astor, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Board. Thank you for having me. I have just one item for you today. Emergency management consulting services. As part of our disaster debris preparedness, Craven County has held prepositioned emergency management consulting contracts for natural disasters and to provide aid to other county departments in the completion of grant applications associated with natural disaster recovery and resiliency projects. On August 7th, 2023, staff published a request for proposals for emergency management consulting services. The proposals were due back August 21st, 23. One proposal was received during that time. Craven County staff decided to republish the request for proposals due to not satisfying the minimum requirements of receiving more than one proposal. The new publication date was August 22nd, 23, with proposals due back September 1st, 2023. Craven County received two proposals on September 1st. After review and rating by our review team, staff requests the Board of Commissioners award insight, plan, and development, the emergency management consulting services contract. Insight, plan, and development has extensive knowledge of Craven County and has project managers in place with a long work history associated with Craven County and especially in disaster recovery and resiliency projects. Craven County staff recommends the board, Craven County Board of Commissioners, to award a one-year contract with four one-year renewals to insight, plan, and development to provide these services, emergency management consulting services. And a copy of the summary review sheet is provided in your packet.
All right, Commissioners, you have any questions for Mr. Astor? All right, here none. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept insight, plan, and development to provide the emergency management consulting services.
All right, you heard the motion. Do I have a second?
Yes.
I have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item three is social services. We have with us Mr. Jeffrey Merritt. Good morning, sir.
Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, thank you for having me. We have two budget amendments this morning for you. The first one is related to our low-income housing and energy assistance program. For the budget amendment, we get these at the beginning of the year. This is for our low-income housing and energy assistance program that will begin starting in December and will last through March. We do this program every year or until funds are exhausted. So this is the funding allocation that we got for this year. So we wanted to ask your approval for that.
Okay, any questions? I've got one, and it's a, I reckon it's a great thing to have, but I noticed that we are, we're receiving the third highest amount in the state. How does that come about?
State sets a funding formula, Chairman, and when they do the funding authorization, we accept what they give us. So we're not involved in the funding formula authorization.
No explanation?
That is similar question. It's 5% of the total budget is what we receive out of 100 counties because every county receives funding, and we're getting 5% of that.
We had a, I think it was a total of 6.6, and so $328,000. Yeah, we got a big amount this year, so.
Yeah, excuse me. Does this have anything to do with the source of the funding, whether or not state funds or energy funds coming from national providers?
Well, no, this is, this is not a provider-led fund. You know, we do have some of those like share the warrant, and there are some electric corporations that will provide some of those funds. So no, this is not. And there could be other amounts. What, sometimes what you see here is there's additional funding authorizations that will give these other counties more. They may have just decided to give all of ours upfront, and then when more funding starts to be released, then other counties may have more and we may have less. So that's another explanation. Again, you know, they don't involve the counties in these decisions or give us a lot of information while we get the funding authorizations and we, you know, move forward with, with those funds needed to administer that program.
Okay, thank you. Any addition?
Did we get, did the amount we're getting greatly exceed what we got last year?
Um, looking at these, Commissioner Booker, I don't know the exact funds, but I think they're right around the same amount. We usually get between somewhere in the range of mid-300s to 400s, and sometimes that can change as counties spend or don't spend, and if we ask for more, depending upon what the needs for our program are. Sometimes in the past, we have been able to come back due to the demand for our program because as again, these funds, you know, it's not, we get a certain amount of funds, and when those funds are exhausted, when we either close our program or the state offers up more funds, we can go and request more, depending on how much funds are there, what we can receive, and how, and what the deadline is with the program, because there's also a hard date deadline. You know, the end of March is when applications are stopped as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I was just wondering if it's a tiered system like they do with the Board of Education, because you have Mecklenburg with 6,000 and Durham County with 3,000 or 30,000, and I mean, that's a very low number compared for their population. So that's, that's why I was just wondering. It just doesn't, it seems like Guilford County is a lot. So it's supplemental or you don't know?
Honestly, I don't know. Again, I think that what-
Which is good for us.
Yeah, what, what may happen again is that there may be additional release of funds, and then they may go back and look, and spread those funds to other counties in other amounts.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes. Will citizens have access to these funds as soon as we approve them today?
What?
Or is there a timeframe when it's, when it starts to?
This program starts on December 1st each year, and there's an age requirement there, household, I think, age 65 and older, but we'll come back and we can get some more information on that. We-
So this starts in December, not currently?
Right. Yeah, yeah, not currently. So we do have another program, the crisis, crisis intervention program that starts at the beginning of the fiscal year. This is a, this is specifically targeted towards heating, so they start in those winter months.
If you don't mind, whether it's, you come to us or just send us that information, send it through Jack, it would be to remind us of the process. So when we're talking to folks, we could share that.
I'll go ahead and put it on my calendar, send something kind of like in the, in the beginning of November, so it's not too early, but it's close enough where you can start getting the word out. Was that, will that suffice?
Yes, yes. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, here none. Do you have a budget amendment amount of $323,988? I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Secondly, a motion.
And a second.
The motion.
Any further discussion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, item B.
And our second amendment is to replace a vehicle. We had a vehicle that was involved in an accident, no fault to our staff, and we were trying to obtain that vehicle last year during the, during that fiscal year, but as you know, they're, you know, difficult to find. And so we are trying to get funds to go ahead and complete the purchase of that vehicle, which happens to fall in this fiscal year.
All right, any questions? Here none. Do we have a motion to approve the budget amendment amount of $28,593?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, I'll get you that email in the beginning of November.
Appreciate it, Jim. All right, item four, the Health Department. We have with us today Dr. Ossler and Mr. Harrelson. So welcome to both of you.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
We have two items, and the first is a fee approval for your consideration. Dr. Ossler and her staff been doing a lot of great work. She's been on board. They've reviewed the standard operating procedures, and they did a review of the fees, and she's here to speak to that or any other questions you may have about the animal shelter this morning.
Thank you. Welcome, Dr. Ossler.
Hi, thanks for having me. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All right, so just a quick update, what we've been doing over there in the last couple of months. I don't know if, I know a few of you attended our open house, which was a roaring success. We did end up having quite a few visitors to our shelter and a lot of adoptions associated with that. We did also receive about $2,400 in donations that day from our, our raffles and donations directly to the animal shelter. And in that time, I really think that having the open house has been good for the shelter and the community. We have done quite a few adoptions this year compared to last year. So last year, our total adoption number for the same amount of time was 97 animals, and this year we are already at 215. So quite a, quite a big improvement there, and that's even with 300 less animals coming into the shelter. So just in the last three days, we were able to send out 49 animals through rescue, through foster, and through adoption. So we're really trying our hardest to get these animals to where they need to be, new families, new friends. We've been updating our Facebook page, posting our intake numbers so that the community is aware of how many animals we get in through stray, owner surrender, returns, things like that. And in general, just having some really good success with the animals medically. Everyone's been really healthy and just getting the animals out to the people where they need to be. But for the updates on the fees, so really generally the first couple of, the first, where are we? Four, the dog adoption fee and cat adoption fee, it's clearly just changing wording on there, so upwriting what vaccines we give, how old the animals are when they get their heartworm tests, how old they are, how big they are when they get spayed or neutered, just for clarification, because the previous ones were a little confusing. The second one is just the active duty. We do give a discount for adoption fees on that. Previously, it just said $25 less, so we just clarified that and broke it out to dogs and cats. Senior cat for senior lap, we do offer a significantly discounted adoption rate for seniors and our senior cats, who tend to be a little bit harder to adopt. So just changing the price on to $20 just to cover the cost for the vaccines for us on that. And our newest addition is the Lonely Hearts Club, which was inspired by my last visit here. So discounting prices for animals who have been here longer than 50 days, which is our average length of stay. So it's basically half price for those animals, and we keep track of that in our system. So if they've been here for 50 days or longer, they're half price, which hopefully will encourage people to adopt the animals who maybe been with us a little longer and had a little less interest to begin with, which tend to be older animals or not, not puppies and kittens. Further down, heartworm-positive dog. Again, that's just clarifying language on that. They are discounted because they do have a medical concern, which we encourage the new adopter to treat at their own cost. So we discount that for them. And then further down, the rescue, mostly clarifying words and just adding a fee for that. So if we alter the animal at the hospital, we do charge for the pull fee for the shelters, and that's basically just to recoup our costs for spaying or neutering that animal. If they're previously altered or if they choose to take them unaltered, there's no fee for that. So those are the next five. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Sorry. That's just clarifying whether they're cat or dog, spayed, unspayed, that sort of language. And if you go down to B for vaccination, we just remove the board of televaccine from there as a fee. We provide the board of televaccine, which is for kennel cough for all dogs in our adoption facility, and we are not allowed to offer that to the public, so we just remove that from our fee schedule. We did add or change the rescue or adoption FELV-FIV test. That's for feline immunodeficiency virus and feline leukemia. So just adding a charge for that to cover our costs for the test, and then also provide that as an option for rescues or adopters to have their cat tested before they go home. From personal experience, an FELV-FIV test can run anywhere from $35 to $60 at a regular clinic, so it's still at a significant discount for the community. And that would only be for animals that are, again, in our care. We did remove the heartworm test fee because we don't, we already heartworm test them before they go to rescue. And then D, which is supplies, just adding the ability to offer cat carriers and e-collars, the Elizabethan collars, so the cone, cone of shame for the animals that have been spayed or neutered. A lot of people ask for that, and we would like to be able to have the ability to give them one to take home so they don't have to stop at PetSmart or Walmart on their way. And then the animal carrier, because you'd be surprised how many people don't bring carriers to adopt a cat. So we like them to be able to go home in a carrier rather than in someone's arms or in a leash wrapped around them to makeshift harness. And then E, the last one, is just a health certificate for rescue transport. Some states require a health certificate to transport across state lines, so just officially having a charge for that for rescues, because we do, it takes quite a while to make those health certificates, and I do have to maintain a USDA animal/pet health travel certification to write those. So that's kind of the spielie on the adoption fees, or the fee changes.
All right, so if we will, let's handle the fee, the approval of the fee proposals first, and then if you have any questions to ask about other things. So are there any questions on the fee pro, I can't even say the word, proposals?
There, I do not have a question, but at our Health Department meeting-
Yes.
-we, we went through each of those with some detail, in, in detail, and she gave us good explanations on all of them. So I would make a motion that we approve the new fees.
Okay.
I would second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the approval of the new fees, or less, let me rephrase that, for the fee proposals. Are, is there any discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Now, any questions for Dr. Ossler, just in general?
I have a comment, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
I'd just really say thanks for doing the Lonely Heart Program, Club, Club Program. Discount makes a lot of sense to me when you're getting to that point where then there may eventually be euthanized, so you're giving a discount to folks who would want those animals that have been there a while. So I think that's a great idea. I'm liking everything I, I'm, what I'm seeing here. So good job, and just let us know what you need.
All right, Vice Chair.
You mentioned spay and neuter.
Mm-hmm.
If, if I go to adopt an animal today, will it be spayed and neut, or neutered in every case, or how are we doing that now?
Yes, so short answer, yes. Long answer, most likely. So we attempt to spay or neuter every animal that leaves our facility, whether that is doing a medical foster where, say, if they aren't spayed and they need to come back the next day, the people can take them home and bring them back for spaying and neutering. They're still technically our animals. They're just on med foster. But the only time we would not send out a spayed or neutered animal is if it was medically not recommended. So maybe they were severely underweight, or they were of an advanced age, or something like that, where it would be unhealthy to put them under anesthesia, or they were too small to be spayed or neutered.
I guess my question relates to cats primarily, and the fact that in the past-
Yes.
-we were adopting out cats that were not neutered, and with our cat-
Yeah.
-population situation, I'm glad to hear we're-
Yes.
-a large, large percentage of the animals. If they're, if they're young and healthy and we're neutering them.
Yeah, every, almost every single cat that we've adopted out is fully spayed or neutered. The only time again would be if they were less than six weeks of age, or less than eight weeks of age, or less than 2.2 pounds, in which case we have two options, which is medical foster for the, say, two or three weeks until they are large enough, or taking a voucher, which we still do have the voucher program, but I think we've maybe done five vouchers in the past three months. So we're really limiting that number on that.
Thank you.
No problem.
Questions?
Ms. Smith?
Well, again, thank you for what you're doing. Got great confidence in, in you, and we're hearing good things from the citizens of this county, and so appreciate you.
And I really appreciate all the support you guys have given us, and we have a great team over there that are working really hard to get these animals, you know, processed in and processed out, so vaccinated and put on the, the Facebook page, and really, we've had a really great team over there, been working hard to achieve these numbers. So-
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Harrelson, we have 4B. We have additional state funding budget amendment.
Yes, sir. We were fortunate enough to have some infrastructure funds come our way through the Department of Public Health, and like Mr. Merritt said, with DSS, they have a funding algorithm, and our amount for, and we have five years to spend this. Our total was $344,667, and we would like to accept all of that. And we have a budget amendment for $107,847 of that money to go towards a nurse practitioner position. We currently be fully staffed with nurse practitioners, and we have a request for a county position for, for one of the ladies who is working contract right now, but she would really prefer to be a county employee, and we would like that too, because then that leads into full-time and a little bit ease, better ease of scheduling and more appointments available for the community.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
I have a question. Are you, are you speaking, are you requesting one person or two? You said a nurse practitioner, and then you said you had a county person who would like to be?
Well, we have, right now, she's currently on contract.
Right.
And we would like to roll this-
Over to a nurse practitioner?
Yeah, to a county employee. We'd like to establish that county position to slide her into.
Okay. We're addressing two, two new employees.
One.
Just, just the one position.
Okay.
She's already currently serving as a nurse practitioner, but-
Yes, sir.
-she's not a county employee.
That's right.
With this funding, then she will be.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, other questions? Is, is this going, is this funding for one time, five years, or can you apply for it again and possibly get it in the future?
One-time funding.
One-time funding.
And the, the nurse practitioners are basically the engines to drive our, our clinics, so they do generate revenue with the billings, and we're hopeful that the Medicaid expansion will pass and really trying to gear up for that. There, I will be coming back to you in the near future with some new funds that we were fortunate enough to get through the FQHC, and there's a lot of components to this, for the rest of this funding and some other, and a separate part of money, new HERSA money. It's all coming together at a good time for us, and it's trying to meet that demand that we know we're going to have here if, if the expansion goes through.
So not trying to put words in your mouth, but what I'm hearing from you, so long-term, you feel like we'll have revenue, other sources coming in to support this position for the future?
Yes, sir, I do. I think that the billables on these right now would, would sustain it.
Vice Chair.
And the other point on this, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong. It's a five-year program. We can spend as much as we want now. We can spend it all in the first year if we want, or we can delay it and spend it out over the five years. So-
Yes, sir, that is correct.
That's really, a lot of flexibility is good.
Yeah, it was, it was, came in a wonderful time for us across the state.
Okay. So in what I heard you say, there's actually two actions that we're to take. One is to approve acceptance of the state funding, and two is to approve the budget amendment that we have of $107,847. Is that correct, staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so you heard the, the request. What's desired the board?
Move to approve the state funding of $344,000. Is that what we do first? Okay.
All right, so we have the motion. I have a second from Vice Chair. Is any discussion on the motion? Are we clear on that? Are we correct in what we said? Okay, because in, okay, so just, just clarification. Everybody understand the motions? Two actions under one motion. All right. Here no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I got an email from Clay Gaskins, who's our hospice director, a couple weeks ago, and Scott and I talked about it. And one of the challenges in running a program like hospice is it's really dependent on our patient count, how well we're doing, we're in. We've had some ups and downs. COVID was not a brand of hospice, and other issues in the past, being fully staffed and things like that, the difficulty. What I heard in the emails, I think that you articulated, is we are having a fantastic year. We're fully staffed, going in. Clay's doing a great job, his team out there. And Scott, I'm going to let you talk about revenue, but I mean, we're really looking at probably one of the better years so far.
Yes, sir.
A lot of real estate still to cover that we have.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. White. With hospice, we, we do, we have staffed up to a, a certain level of what we can anticipate. We think that we could probably do as many as 55 patients with the staffing complement we have right now, patient census at one time. And when we were having difficulty is when we dropped down to two nurses and our, our numbers were in the teens, our patient census was. But now, for the first two months of the year, we have averaged 35 patients, and that is quite a different scenario financially for us. And so far, right now, currently, we are at 43. So that, that is climbing, and I think that we're getting a lot of good feedback from the community on the services. We got one of the largest donations to, on behalf of hospice that we've ever had recently. It just speaks to the, the patient satisfaction.
So I think what Scott's saying there is we take pride, at least I do, and I think this board does, on being the number one provider of Craven County Hospice. We serve our folks here, and I think we do a great job with it, and I'm just proud of them. I mean, it's not an easy job, for sure, but we've got a great team. I saw that in the breakfast this spring with the team you've got, volunteers and staff. So I, I love seeing this program be over 30, because that means typically the year's okay. 30 is sort of the benchmark you look for. 43 would be exceeding that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I would also, before we leave the podium, like to thank all of y'all for allowing us to hire a veterinarian to manage the shelter. I think that Mr. White and Sheriff Hughes and myself all can, can say we have seen the effects, and we do appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, just another point. I, we get donations from families that, that we have taken care of, the, the hospice has taken care of a family member. So a lot of times, the family and appreciation will give us a nice donation, but the one he's referring to was from a situation where there were no surviving family members, and in their will, we got a large donation.
$70,000.
$70,000. Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. So that plus where we're at with our census, we're really looking at, at a great year for hospice from a financial standpoint. Last year, we, we lost money in hospice, a substantial amount, last couple of years. So very encouraging where we're at and where we're going.
Well, thank y'all. Appreciate your presentations. All right, item five, we have with us Sheriff Chip Hughes. Two items to discuss. The first one is the COVID grant rollover funds from fiscal year '23 to this present fiscal year. Good morning, sir.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I want to echo what Scott said about, real quick, about the shelter. Total 180, turn around. We have a great working relationship with them now. The things they're doing out there, they have- they have really set the bar high for shelters, I could not be more pleased with the working relationship that we have, and you, you've done an outstanding job in a very short time, ma'am, thank you. Today, I've come before you to, for rollover of our grant that we got last year, it's COVID grant from the state, it was in the amount of $73,892. The remaining balance of $15,321 is the budget amendment that we're looking to roll over. This is going to be used to continue to buy more cleaning supplies and gloves, as we are still dealing with many situations that require us to sanitize more than we normally have had to.
Okay, you have the budget amendment, as Sheriff said, of $15,321, what's the desire of the board?
Move to approve the budget amendment, the sheriff.
Okay, we have the motion, I have a second.
Second motion.
Second from Commissioner Smith, any discussion on the motion? Here, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. All right, in 5B, we added to the agenda discussion on a school resource officer at West Craven High School. Sheriff, I'll let you begin, just telling us about the situation there, and then I'll follow, follow up with you.
Well, Chairman, this year, with the, the schools starting, we have had many unusual events, many of them dangerous at times to our students, faculty, and staff, and my personnel. In particular, the call volume at three of our schools, one, first and foremost, being Havelock High School, or excuse me, West Craven High School. Call volume there is much higher than it was in preview, or has been in previous years. We currently have one SRO there, and unfortunately, you know, society has taken us here where we have to have SROs in all of our schools, and for us to have one in a high school is just, it's not acceptable. We cannot perform the job we need to and protect such large real estate with so many children and staff members there. We can't do it adequately. So I come before you asking for an additional school resource office for West Craven High School. Based on call volume, the amount of fights that we've had in that school in the short period of time that we've been in session is more than we've ever had. And unfortunately, you know, that school is not located in a, an urban setting, where we have the backup from local municipalities and more of my deputies, it is in a rural setting. Large amount of students, and it requires us, when we have to respond to that area, response times can be lengthy, just depending on how call volumes are, but everybody drops everything they're doing to go. And we've had to do that about a half a dozen times so far this year, because of large fights, multiple individuals fighting, six, seven, eight students at a time. And when there's one SRO, that is very difficult to deal with. So one, not only am I concerned, first and foremost, about the children and their safety and the staff, but my own people that are in there, that are clearly outnumbered in these situations. And we also know when there is a presence of law enforcement in there, it does give us a chance to bridge the gap between many of these communities and law enforcement. And not only do they serve as a protector, but they're in there serving as a mentor, a counselor, sometimes a mother or father figure, so they wear many, many hats, and it's very hard to find SROs. But I ask you to please consider this, we must have two SROs in all of our high schools. We also have other schools that need them as well, you know, unfortunately, our middle schools, West Craven Middle and HJ, need two SROs, they currently have one that's assigned. But I ask you to consider this, I do have two applicants, qualified applicants, that are interested when an SRO position comes open, so the turnaround time, if this is approved today, should not be long at all. These are seasoned officers, so there would not be a lot of training, other than the layout of schools and the way we do things here, they are from other agencies that have reached out to us and applied, so. I ask you to consider this, it's something that we need, and you all have always been very supportive of school safety. Every time I've come to you, you, you have stepped up and, and done more in many times than you've needed to, so I ask you to consider this proposal today.
Thank you for your comments, before I, we begin discussion from the board, and I appreciate you allowing us to add this to the agenda today, I, I will say that I've been approached also, you know, by our Chairman of the School Board, Mr. Brent Manning, who lives in Vanceboro, and also the Vice Chair, Mr. Scott Murphy, who represents the area in which I live in, and both of them are very active in, in the daily activities at West Craven, due to location of where they live and, and just being a part of the community. They have also seen what Sheriff Hughes has said, and asked that the board consider it. I think they've had some discussions with a few of their fellow board members, and definitely, and what they're echoing to me, they have not met since we've had these discussions over the phone with their board, nor have we, but, you know, they're, they do have a consensus and a desire from the majority of their board, that they feel like this position is needed. And definitely, you know, there may be room, not trying to speak for them, but for them to be able to invest some dollars to assist us, definitely, I can't speak on their behalf, but there has been some conversations from them that there might be some buy-in, and of what they can do. I don't know how much that would be, they do have a meeting tomorrow. But today, if we were to approve this, we would need to go ahead and approve the whole amount, and then anything that we would receive from them would just go back into fund balance. I would say also that, you know, it is unprecedented for us to come this close to approving a budget, to have these kind of discussions, but I think with the need that we've seen there, the principal also, Mr. Montreal Lee, he's doing a fabulous job, and, and he has said that he's put himself, just like your deputies have, in the middle of these fights, and, and he's saying it's a regular occurrence. And I, I will share this also, so when we had the discussion sometime about some additional SROs, Sheriff Hughes provided, I know he did for me, he may have provided for some of you, the call volume between West Craven High School, and, and he just used Havelock High School as the comparison at that particular time, and they were neck and neck, there, there was just as many mutual aid calls for Havelock as there was West Craven. And, and definitely, you know, the board saw fit, and I support that, to, to put that extra additional SRO at Havelock High is needed there, just as it's needed at New Bern, but there is a need for West Craven High School. So having said that, I will now turn it over to the board for any questions, comments you may have. Vice Chair Booker.
Two things on my mind, the increase in call volume for this year, now we, we're, we're only, what?
Weeks.
Less than a month, I guess, or about a month?
A month, yes, sir.
In this school, and you've had numerous, what, what, in your opinion, what's fueling this compared to a year ago?
Okay, it's gang-related, it is, we have gangs in all of our high schools, and, and many of our middle schools. And, you know, actually, you know, some of this is spilled over from last year, West Craven Middle, and it's spilled over to the high school, and it's worse now than it ever has been, you know, and we track that type of data and information and intel, we're constantly on social media sites, our intel group looking at what's going on in the chatter that's out there, and a lot of times, we are able to jump out and get in front of it, however, there are times, and when one thing happens, a lot of time, within a number of days, you have a retaliatory, and that's what's happened at West Craven a number of times. And it doesn't just happen at the school, it happens on the buses, and, you know, we're charged with safeguarding these kids from the time they step on that bus until the time they step off of it in the afternoon. So our SROs respond to disturbances on buses, closed confined areas, tensions are high, and it causes a number of problems, so this additional SRO out there, if approved, will just, will give us a better insight as to what's going on, and we'll be able to cover more territory. And a lot of our SROs do form really good sources within the schools, and we have children that, that want to be educated in a safe environment, and have really good reports with these SROs, and are able to share information, so that also helps us in trying to ward off some of these situations that have been happening. But this year, it's, it's been extremely high, for some reason, more than we've ever experienced.
I, I guess this is a question for the administration, the school board, and the school administration, but when one of these situations occurs, are these kids allowed to come back to school the next day? Are they being expelled, are they being put on probationary, do you know, and again, that's not fair to ask you that.
Right.
What do you know about that?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I don't know intimate information, however, from here in the grapevine, I have been told that at least seven children have been suspended for the year already. So it seems pretty serious to me.
Yeah, if they did that in the first month.
Yes, have been already suspended.
Okay.
Because of, you know.
For the same at Havelock High School, they're suspended for 10 days.
Yeah, I'm hearing, you know, long-term suspensions.
Yeah.
Okay.
And of course, there's a process that that goes through, and I think there, you know, they can be overturned. I have reached out to school board members and asked them that, we, we've got to send a message, and that this will not be tolerated and accepted in our schools. So, you know, we are doing our part from breaking them up, removing them, and, and these students in all of these cases are being charged, and, and we don't like to do that, but in this case, you know, we feel like it, it's time that there's some consequences for their actions.
Old enough to know that this is not right.
They are.
The last question I have is, you make a great point about that school being isolated as compared to New Bern. Can be called and probably be there in minutes, are we, are the Vanceboro Police, are they tuned in? Because they're not that far away, they could get there maybe quicker than your deputies.
Well, they man a school there as well, so one of their officers is assigned to Farm Life, that's the only school we don't have in the county, public school. And they have very limited resources also, you know, in fact, we probably respond into town when they're not available more than they would come out, but we do have a good working relationship with them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Have any of these situations resulted in hospital visits for children? And on the flip side of that, has that resulted in expulsion for the, the folks involved versus suspension, which is, you know, they can come back, an expulsion where they do not?
Right, as far as the hospital visits, I, I can't comment on that, and then, you know, the expulsions or suspensions, I can just tell you that I've, I've heard that at West Craven High, just about all of them have resulted in long-term suspensions. So the principal there is really, really stepping up, but as the chairman said, you know, he's been assaulted as well by these students, so it's a, it's a battle, you know, and the overwhelming majority of the kids out there are really great kids that want to learn, but they want to learn in a safe environment, and your educators are not enforcers, they're, they're there to educate, and they want us to just be able to keep them safe.
What are your comparisons to, like, long-term, like, I know, I had a friend that worked there 10 years ago, and she was assaulted, I mean, so, I mean, I think there's a history of some issues there, so are you just comparing year to year? Or during your administration, or you're going back when, like I said, how much, how much worse is this than it's been, historically speaking?
Really, what I've looked at is, and I've had a pretty good knowledge based on the time I spent on the Governor's Task Force on Safer Schools, but it has increasingly gotten worse, for a number of reasons, you know, mental health, single-parent families, the gang activity, which is more active now than we've ever seen in schools, and that, I know for a fact, by the time I've been in office, we have been tracking it, we've dealt with more of that, and, you know, they're not secretive about that, you know, they're a gang member. So we do know, you know, pretty much through our intel, which ones are gangs, and what, what gang they're affiliated with. And, you know, so you do keep a closer eye on them to make sure they're not mingling together, but, you know, once again, in West Craven, one deputy for a very, very large campus.
Are they active outside the school?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Additional questions? And I, I just, the sheriff mentioned about the principal, Mr. Lee, last year, I have not seen it this year, but last year, it was recorded several times, it was shared with me, him, he got in the midst of fights, and he's shorter than I am, and definitely skinnier, but he jumped in right there, never thought about it. You know, he, he wanted to make sure those students were safe, and, and I commend him, I have, I get his messages that he sends out every week to his students, and he has tried to encourage, you know, safe schools and folks to come to school to learn, and he has also been vocal about those that don't want to learn, that, you know, that he don't appreciate them disrupting his, the, the school, so. Commissioners, before you, I have passed out, and I, staff needs to jump in, I invite them to, but I did ask the county manager to come up with a cost breakdown, and Jack, I'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so this was actually quite easy, because we just did this during budget with Sheriff, so. This is not new information, but it's just kind of putting it back together for you. There are a little, a few little twists in this, I want to make sure you recognize. One is the SRO salary, that is after the COLA and everything with budget that you guys adopted back in July. But what this position does not maintain, that every other position does, is a grant that goes along with it, that either offsets it by $38,000 or $50,000, depending on which grant cycle you were in. So there is no grant on this, so this would be the first one for that. All the benefits are the same as any other deputy or employee of the Sheriff's Office. When we get down, so I'm skipping there, that $74,580 is all in, that is not for a full year, that is for the remainder of this fiscal year, right? So we don't need a budget for something that's already passed, so when you look at it next year, it'd actually be higher than that. Below that is the equipment, the vehicle and upfitting, that is the typical cost, assuming that we can get a vehicle, which has been a big challenge with not only law enforcement vehicles, but other county vehicles. You've had every department head in the county come through rolling stuff over because they can't get them. In this case, there is some good news, in that when the chargers were released last year for the last cycle of chargers to ever be built, we actually ordered two spares. So there are two vehicles that are unassigned at this moment, we could sign one of those to this officer, so that, that money's there. We still need to pay for the vehicle, it still needs to be assigned, so we need to go to Sheriff, we need to clear that up. And then the remaining things, Sheriff, I'm going to let you jump in, but these are things a typical deputy sheriff would have, cell phone, a radio, a firearm, computer, and then, of course, training costs, and the Sheriff's been very adamant about making sure his SRO officers are fully trained, there's a tremendous amount of, of work those folks do in the summer and days off where they're there, and there's an expense to that. So bottom line, $78,000 in equipment, $74,000 roughly in employee costs for $150,000 cost all in.
And, and.
Hundred fifty-three, I'm sorry.
This is my question, I know it's on your minds too, about the grant, so, and talk, definitely, we would not have the grant for the remainder of this year, but, and what's been shared with me by the Vice Chair of the School Board is that they will, if this was approved, they will apply for the grant going into the next fiscal year. And some conversation between the Sheriff and I, and they feel like there's definitely grant money still available. You feel, I mean, I know that's a different territory, but with your interaction with our legislators, you feel like that's a good possibility?
You know, I'm told it's in there. There you go, I don't know what to say other than that. Right, I, I feel very optimistic that, that it's going to be there, there's going to be additional funding for SROs. I think it'd be very hard, as much as they're fighting about, for them to take that out.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Smith?
Looking at this, quite a number of items below the line there, we would need, not need to purchase after this year, is that correct?
There are some one-time calls, I'm sorry, I should have said that, Commissioner Smith. Most everything below the employee cost is one-time expense. When I say one-time, you got a one-time startup, and then they'll get on a replacement cycle. Computers are different than firearms, cars are different than radios, so it just depend on where it was shelved in the budget after.
Any additional questions?
Are, are the laptops being provided by the school district, because you had mentioned that before, is this a different laptop?
So I've been talking with them, and that before, I guess before, really, I got here, they were not contributing. The county manager and myself went and met with the superintendent and the school board about this true partnership that we're supposed to have, which means sharing the cost. Whereas, you know, there are certain things they cannot purchase, like firearms, and I guess vehicles, I don't know. But they did commit to the county manager and I that they would help with other things. They have purchased, I think, 28 or 29 laptops now. The docking stations and printers that go with those laptops, they have purchased some of those. In this case, I've asked that they, they purchase more than they normally have, because once again, this is kind of unexpected, but it's something we have to deal with. And I've gotten a pretty good commitment from them that they were going to help with as much as they can. So I'm very optimistic that laptops, radios, docking stations, uniforms, I'm not sure about the telephones or Wi-Fi, but more cost will be taken care of by the school.
Vice Chair Booker. Jack, then, what we're asking here is to approve a worst-case scenario from a cost standpoint.
Sir.
More than likely, it'll be less than this.
I have a good feeling.
Depending on the school board and so on.
Yeah.
But we're approving it, and the situation is, if we can't get any support, this is what it's going to cost us.
Yes, sir. And the reason, and I shared this with the chairman, is if you don't do it, we can't order anything. You actually have to authorize the whole litany. So this gets us a head start, gets a position quickly. If we end up getting a computer or a radio, then it'd just be less that we would take out of fund by.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Sheriff, any other? Thank you for that update and your help. Any other updates you have for us this morning?
That's it. Once again, I do appreciate each of you for your support, especially when it comes to school safety, but also the safety of our citizens in general. If y'all continue to support us 100%, I thank you very much. Also, I thank our shelter director again for the outstanding job she's doing and the partnership that we have with them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, do you need a break? Are you good? All right, we'll move to item six, economic development. Mr. Jeff Wood, good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. Excited to bring a development between our relationship with FRC in front of you today. Just a little bit of background to remind the board. In 2021, we started conversations with FRC East about what the Navy calls a tech bridge. And a tech bridge is a facility and an operation that is built intentionally outside of the air station. In our case, outside the fence of military property, to allow them to be able to collaborate with industry and academia. Think of it as a problem-solving group. In 2021, FRC East was awarded a tech bridge, known as ENC Tech Bridge. One of the reasons they were able to get that was because they had entered into a relationship with Craven County, known as a PIA agreement or Partnership Intermediary Agreement. This is kind of like a memorandum of understanding in our world, but in DOD, they have to have a different name. But it basically allows us to be able to have transactional relationships directly with each other. And if you remember, in 2022, we launched our, our tech bridge with FRC, and we were fortunate enough to have the Secretary of Navy come in for that event. So since then, we've been having conversations back and forth. There's around 20 of these around the world. We took our time to try to figure out how we could do this right. And we received in July, I believe, an RFP from FRC East to provide a certain number of services. I sat down with Andy Shorter, the director of the airport, Tarsha over at the convention center, to be able to put together a proposal and respond back to them. And so I'm happy to announce that we were awarded a contract of $516,048. To give you some ideas of what that will do, that's up to that amount, I should say. There's a church that the airport had bought, 634 Airport Road. They're going to retrofit that building, and that will act as the physical presence of where the tech bridge will be able to establish itself outside the fence. They are working, they're going to work with the airport to try to figure out what exactly that means. But to give you an idea of what they need, it's an area where they can set up some offices. Businesses can come in, have some office space if they need it. But more importantly, imagine there being a problem that the Navy knows that they have, FRC knows that they have, that they need a technical solution, and a company, maybe one that they've never worked with before, particularly a small business, says, hey, I've got that solution. This gives them a facility they can go to, demonstrate their product, their service, whatever that solution is. And if it's something that is successful and does solve that problem, then fast-track them to be able to work with FRC, to be able to get whatever our defenders need to continue to protect the country. It's a very exciting program. It'll also act as a business magnet. It'll allow us to have new companies coming into the area that we've never had a chance to talk to before. I was fortunate enough to visit Softworks, which is the special, special forces version in the Army, their version of this at Tampa Bay. And it was really exciting to see what kind of innovative things that they were doing. So, and they have about 10,000 partners around the world that they send problems to on a regular basis. Also, this funding will allow us to plan and execute events at the convention center or other venues that will allow companies to come in. Until the church is complete, it could be one of those companies saying, we need a place to showcase what we've got, that answer. We'll utilize the convention center for that activity. It'll also be an opportunity for us to have industry and symposiums, where multiple companies will be coming in over a one- or two-day period, and also academia. It predominantly looks at the convention center, but understanding there's the Havelock Tour Center, there might be a situation where we might need to do an event somewhere else, wherever that may be, to help FRC get in front of the companies that they need to get in front of. It also provides funding to universities to do research, particularly their engineering, schools. It also has some funding in there for our schools, Craven County schools, where, for instance, the C-1A funded two teachers' stipends over the, embedded in FRC East for seven weeks. There's funding that can fund activities like that as well. I'm, I'm personally very excited about this, because it is going to allow me, as your economic developer, to get in front of a lot of defense industry companies, and be able to say how important it would be for them to be, to look at us for, to establish permanent facilities near FRC East. FRC East is growing. We know that. They are a trajectory to win a lot of contracts in the future because of how great of a partner they are. They are the largest private, or largest industrial employer east of I-95. So this is our chance to be able to help them through that process. And this money's going to go into our economy as we do these events and have folks come in to visit them. So I'm asking the board today to have the finance director sign off on the award of $516,048 and to add that to my budget.
All right. Any questions from the board? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Is this $516,000, is that for, solely for the building? Or will, does it involve some staffing?
There is some staffing dollars in it as well. We started with some administrative pieces. This first year, this is the first time we've ever done this. This is the first time FRC's ever done this. And in some ways, within the Navy, even though we're the 20th one, every, every entity within the Navy is a little different. So it's the first time that they're doing it. This first year, we want to see what works for us and what maybe we need another partner to do. There is staffing in this as well.
Additional questions? I do have one. What's your, and maybe I'm just overlooking it. What's the time limit that you have to expend these funds? Is it, I mean, is, you've got to do it in a year? Have you got five years?
It's 12 months.
12 months.
And then, talking to other groups that have PIA agreements with the Navy, that's typical. Every year, they're going to come back and say, now we need you to do this. And it was, in our proposal, a combination of these construction costs, invoices that we knew those cost estimates were going to be. Our fees and schedules were very critical for us to be able to say, here are solid prices. The Department of Defense is very adamant about understanding where you came up with your, your estimates. So as of right now, and I don't know if they have the ability to do a multi-year agreement, but right now, it's year-to-year.
But I suppose you feel good about the opportunity to get additional funding as it continues?
I do. Every, every PIA partner that I've talked to so far that have been doing this a lot longer, there's two strong ones in the mid-Atlantic, in Maryland and in Florida. And they've, every year, come back. These are dollars that the Department of Defense has as outreach efforts regardless. And this is just a way for them to be able to streamline those and be more cost-effective.
All right. Here, no additional questions. Do we have a motion to authorize the finance director to execute the PIA agreement and approve the budget amendment in the amount of $516,048?
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Hunt. I have a second.
Second.
Second, from Vice Chair Booker. Is any discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Jeff. We appreciate what you're doing, sir. Okay, item seven, we have IT budget amendment. Ms. Steve Bennett, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board. In April of 2023, the IT department applied for the state and local cybersecurity grant. This grant reimburses counties and other local government agencies for cybersecurity-related services and technologies. Staff have been notified of an award to Craven County in the amount of $99,944. We're requesting the board to approve a budget amendment in that amount so that we can get reimbursement for the funds.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Bennett? Here, none. Do we have a motion to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $99,944?
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, sir.
All right. Item eight is appointments. You have there commissioners pending appointments. Are there any pending nominations from the board? All right, here, none. We will go to current. You have the Craven County Clean Suite. You have Ms. Pat Sager. She wishes to be reappointed. She has been a champion of Clean Suite for many, many, many years. Do you have any nominations?
I nominate Ms. Smith.
Okay, we have a nomination. Sager, are there additional nominations? Here, none. We will accept Ms. Sager by acclamation. Next is the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, Ms. Linda Chagnan. She's currently serving, and she wishes to be reappointed. If it's the board's desire, do we have nominations?
I nominate Ms. Linda Chagnan to be reappointed.
We have the nomination of Ms. Chagnan. Are there additional nominations? Here, none. We will accept her by acclamation. Then, you see, the upcoming terms expire in October, November. Please take note of them. Are there any additional appointments to be made today? Here, none. We will go to county attorney's report. Mr. Grady?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, sir. County manager's report, Mr. Vike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this morning. Couple of updates. We've been talking several times about the renovations that are needed at New Bern Library. There's been some local news about that. I did want to point out, we will be closing the New Bern branch of the library on December the 1st. And then on December the 4th, the New Bern Library will open at the Old Fireman's Museum. And that was a partnership with the city, and making sure we still had space available for folks who need library services during that time. At your last meeting, you approved some HVAC repairs. We're still working on the larger floor repair. And that, that kind of leads me into the state budget, right? So I think Scott and the sheriff both talked about it. We don't have one now. And, you know, there's not a lot of news that says we're getting close to having a state budget at this point. There's some things that still need to be worked out. What is difficult to manage with projects like this is there are funds in that budget that would help push this along. So we're going to get to a point where we're gonna, we're gonna have to make a decision. Do we try to go on and get this project done, or do we have another delay? And we've already delayed it last year in trying to figure out and make sure we had a secondary location where we could keep the services open. So we're getting close to that point, but, but there's lots of other points like that. And one of the biggest ones that I think Mr. Harrelson mentioned, and I know Mr. Merritt's here too, is Medicaid expansion, right? So a couple of months ago, Jeff came to you and spent a lot of time going over what that would look like. And there was some timelines that were thrown around, October 1st, December 1st. But we don't have a state budget. And that's tied directly to the state budget. So when we talk about increased revenues at the Health Department, that's all off the table until this gets done. So there are some larger issues at play here, right? Casinos, other things like that, that don't have anything to do with Craven County, but are slowing the process down. So all I can tell you is, we're continuing to work through it. There are lots of pieces in there that we would love to see get started soon. Unfortunately, we don't control that. So I'm going to move on and just talk a little bit now about some things that happened last week and the week before. We had our C-1A annual meeting. I don't know if Mr. Wood's still in earshot, but he did a great job, he and Abigail. We were able to tour FRC. We were able to be down on the base and meet with some of our military friends there, and work toward that partnership, which you solidified a lot just a moment ago with the Naval X Tech Bridge. That is a huge part of, Chad, and I think you'll appreciate this, what Colonel Burke said about, and what Mark Minos said about building those folks up, starting at the K-12 level, right? Bringing employees in, training the teachers, getting people excited about STEM. And it's just, it's a great thing that we can perpetuate some of the progress we've had by growing our own. It's very difficult to recruit in an economy like this, where the housing market's unstable or the other things there. So I was excited to hear that, and I'm excited to see that moving along. So last week, Amber and I attended the Recovery Alliance Initiative State Summit in Raleigh, where we were actually asked to speak about the opioid settlement money in Craven County and how we're dealing with it. And there's a lot of times, I feel like with this process, that we've been a little bit behind. But then I'm reminded, when we're in a group like this, that we're actually quite ahead of everybody else. And I called Amber on Friday and told her that, that between her and Jasmine and the team that we have, they have really taken us to the next level, where now people are asking us what we're doing as sort of the model. And, you know, I feel like, and I said something in my talk the other day, that I'm not an expert on opioids. I've never ran a program. I don't know anything about counseling. That's not my bailiwick. But watching and listening and learning from the experts has showed me what we need to do here, and some of the programs that were out there that we don't have, particularly dealing with prenatal care for folks who are in this crisis, you know, how do we deal with those individuals? Because a lot of times, that gentleman right there on the back row is going to be the recipient of that case if we can't try to get him on the right path. And it's funny how these things work. As I was coming home on Friday, I got an email from someone at ECU that said, hey, I've got this really cool prenatal care program I want to talk to you about. So how, how that worked, I don't know, but it just seemed to be happenstance. But Amber did a great job presenting the programs. I continue to be excited about our progress. But I'll end with this. Over the last several months, just conversations since budget, really, there's this, and I've ridden with each of you in your district, and I've seen what you got, and I've seen what's going on. Things are changing in Craven County. I realize that, for the good. There's a lot of great things happening. And it's kind of hard to harness that and talk about them, because we got a tech bridge, and we've got FRC, and we've got a great hospital, we've got a great airport that's growing. It is a great time to be the county manager and a great time to serve Craven County. So hopefully, and I don't know if I'm biting off more than I can chew, or we can articulate that and try to come up with something that you guys can have as you're out talking to your folks about just all those great things that are happening here right now. So, Mr. Chairman, that's it, unless you've got questions for me.
Questions for the county manager.
Nope. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, sir. All right, commissioners' report. Who'd you like to start today?
I'll go ahead and start. I don't really have a report, but I will comment on, I worked with Coach Lee at West, from West Craven High School coaching. He was at West Craven Middle at the time.
It is a great time to be the county manager and a great time to serve Craven County. So hopefully, and I don't know if I'm biting off more than I can chew here, we can articulate that and try to come up with something that you guys can have as you're out talking to your folks about just all those great things that are happening here right now. So, Mr. Chairman, that's it unless you got questions for me.
Questions for the county manager.
Nope, all right, thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, sir. All right, commissioners' report, who'd like to start today?
I'll go ahead and start. I don't really have a report, but I will comment on, I worked with Coach Lee at West, from Wes Craven High School coaching, he was at Wes Craven Middle at the time, coaching for about a decade. And if he needs something, you know, he really needs it, very honest guy, nobody builds relationships with kids like him. That's why it was always tough to run against his team because you knew that he had a personal relationship with every kid on the team, the parents. So if he's having problems, and it's early in the year, so he's probably, it's been harder to build some of those relationships, I'm sure, and he's asking for help, I'm glad that we decided to help them today, so.
Thank you. All right. Who'd like to go first? Ms. B?
I don't have anything.
All right, Commissioner Hunt?
I'm very grateful that this board has approved another SRO at the high school. I think one of our top three missions is protecting our children, so I'm grateful that we're doing it now and not putting it off any longer.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Chair Booker? All right. Again, I would just say thank you to this board of commissioners for your willingness to support Wes Craven High School today. You've shown that through the course of all of our meetings in which we've discussed school resource officers and trying to support the sheriff and his endeavors, and so thank you for that. And definitely, we thank you, sir, for what you're doing and please always extend to your, your folks that we do appreciate them. It's a thankless job, I know many times, but thank you. Last thing I have, I just want to announce, we have Fireman's Day at Coast City, it's a big, big day for Western Craven County, it's September the 30th. We will have a parade at 10:00 a.m. and then we've got barbecue afterward. They always have a good meal, so I invite any of you to come, if you can come participate in the parade, let me know and I will pass it along, so. Anything else to bring before the board of commissioners today? Staff, y'all good? All right, county manager, you good?
I remembered something, sir.
Okay.
My whole point of that at the end, 12 years ago today was the first day I sat in this chair. So lots changed. I lost my train of thought up there, but I appreciate the opportunity to serve and it's been a great 12 years, so, thank you.
I read with Jack, when he became Assistant County Manager, we went to a Karsama meeting together. And, you know, he was, we're close in age and, you know, and I looked at him and here's this man that's gonna make a lot of money. And, uh, and same age as I am, and then here I am, a farmer. And I really, the Bible says
Farmer that makes a lot of money.
Yeah, that's what we hear. The Bible says not to covet, but you know, that day, I said, dang on, I wished I was in his shoes. But I don't know if I would say that today. Folks do not realize what this man endures in every day.[1737.03]